Board of Education on June the 10th at 6 o'clock PM. First, before we get started, we would like Ms. Patty to come up and have a few words. This is our last official board meeting, so we would like to have her have a few words come up to the front. Forty years of service. Stand right there. You can stand anywhere you want.
What I spent doing? I don't know.
Well, Ms. Patty and everyone, we want to celebrate Ms. Patty Mitchell, one of a kind, a true servant with a true heart and a love for the work that she's done for forty plus years. And so Patty, we do want to honor you tonight and give you an opportunity to share your thoughts. Forty years of service and anything else you want to say.
Y'all gonna want me to cry. I'm not gonna cry, I'll be strong. I have loved, I have enjoyed every minute of my work. From a school level to the central office, I have loved it all. You can ask my husband, he calls me Ms. PSRC. Is there anything for Ms. PSRC? So, but I love each and every one of them and I appreciate the board, this board. For being the board you are. I mean, I just can't express, I have enjoyed working with you guys and I'm still gonna be a phone call away and I'll be watching the board meeting sometimes, making sure everything's good, which I know Melissa's gonna do a good job. So, but I appreciate it and I enjoy working with the cabinet and I just love it, okay? I just enjoyed it. I'm gonna miss walking indoors at quarter seven every morning, but I know we're gonna be fine. My husband and I, we're gonna do some things and go home together and enjoy our time.
At this time, we give any board member or any other employee an opportunity to address Ms. Patty.
Mrs. Trey, we'll go around.
Ms. Patty, I told you my feelings last board meeting when you let us know. If there's anything, anything I can do to change your mind, you let me know. Do something, but I appreciate all you've done. Public Schools of Robinson County is a better place because of you, no doubt.
Thank you.
Ms. Patty, I definitely want to thank you for everything that you do and everything that you've done to help me, especially when I came on as a new board member. I thank you for everything that you do now and putting up with me and my shenanigans and my calls. If I text her at 6:45, she takes back, she's always responsive. She makes sure that we don't go without and that everything is in line and I thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service, Ms. Patty. And thank you for recognizing that if you call me at 7:30, you know I'm not gonna answer, but I'm gonna call you back. And I also appreciate you putting up with me, submitting some of my requests and receipts and things like that at the last minute and having Grace with me. Thank you so much for your service. You made the school system a better place and we appreciate you. Enjoy your time.
Ms. Patty, appreciate appreciate your service. You definitely made coming on the board very, as easy as it could be. Always been a text away and anytime I've asked for anything, you've gone above and beyond. So, it's meant a lot.
Thank you.
Kristy, hit it again for me.
Thank you.
I had an employee that had retired from UNCP and she retired from me again and she's, I told her I was jealous. She said, "When you get your time in, you can do it too. You got your time here, enjoy yourself."
Thank you.
Ms. Patty, Ms. Patty is my neighbor, been my neighbor for twenty plus years. I'm also her board member, her and her husband. When I got on the board, Ms. Patty, she showed me how to do things the right way. When I came chairman, she really got on me and showed me how to do things the right way. You know, when I got out of hand, I knew what was coming, she was calling me, "Now, John, you know you're not supposed to do this." And Ms. Patty, I thank you for that. I'm the lucky one, y'all won't get to see her as much as I will. Thank you for all you did for the Public Schools of Robinson County, Ms. Patty.
Okay.
Ms. Patty, I want to say thank you for your service to PSRC, whether it was, whether it was booking our flights or hotels or making sure that we turn in our documents and stuff or we go get our continuing education. You was always there, it was a phone call away, no matter what we needed, I just want to say thank you.
Okay.
Any cabinet member?
I've already told Ms. Patty how much I'm gonna miss her, but I told her I'm not gonna be sad for her, I'm sad for us. This is the time for her and Mr. Grayland to enjoy themselves outside of PSRC and you deserve it, I love you.
Well, Ms. Patty, I get to see Ms. Patty every day and talk to her and she holds me, you know, keeps me straight. And I told her, I said, "Every time I get into a position, people who I have high regard end up retiring." And so she did the same thing to me. And, but I am so happy for her next season of her life as you and your husband, that you guys get to travel and do some things for yourself. And we're gonna definitely miss you and, you know, we're gonna, I'm gonna miss, every day she made me laugh. She always made me laugh, that was her mission every day, to make me laugh, even on those tough days inside. Thank you for that, Ms. Patty, I'm gonna miss you and we always say, "You're a phone call away and if we need you, we'll make a house visit."
I would just like to thank Patty for her hospitality. When I first started at PSRC, Patty really took care of me. I felt like she made sure I had what I needed, she looked after me, she told me if I needed anything and I believed you, that I could go to you for anything. So I just say, "This has been a passion of yours for so long, just find those new passions that keep you going and excited and look around, this is your legacy." I always think about the number of people that you have touched along the way, whether it's students, staffs, colleagues. This is your legacy and you have so much to be proud of, so thank you, thank you.
So I'm not gonna say what Ms. Patty told me a long time ago when she was leaving. And when you told me when you would leave. But anyway, Ms. Patty, Ms. Patty is not walking out with service. As I told someone today, Ms. Patty's walking out with knowledge and that is something that can't be replaced. Anytime we wanted to know anything from twenty, twenty-five years ago, it was, "Call Ms. Patty, she will know." So again, I hope Ms. Patty's still just a phone call away. Whenever we're sitting here and we can't figure something out and Ms. Patty's gonna be the one to have all of the knowledge of PRC with her. Thank you, Ms. Patty.
But Patty, all I would say is Patty Patty. Please join me in standing and giving Patty a round of applause, please.
Before the moment of silence, I do want to announce Mr. Henry Brewer is on virtual along with Ms. Krista Wondell. I mean, Ms. Krista Monroe. Now, before the moment of silence, I do like to remember the SRO, Ms. Brenda Whitmire, she passed on Sunday. She was at Rex Runner and Parkton. A moment of silence. Thank you, now we will have the pledge allegiance by the staff. Next, we will have the adoption of the agenda. A motion bidet by Mr. John Simmons, a second bidet by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of open session minutes. A motion is bidet by Ms. Melissa Ocean. We have a second, second bidet by Mr. Craig Lyer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? For information items, we got Driven to Excel recognition by Ms. Jessica Sealy.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and board members, please join me at the podium for a special presentation.
So good evening, good evening, everyone. It is truly a privilege to stand before you tonight on behalf of the Public Schools of Robinson County as we honor and celebrate the remarkable partnerships that have helped shape the success of our Driven to Excel campaign. At the heart of this initiative is a deep commitment to academic excellence, student achievement and meaningful community collaboration. And this evening, we are proud to recognize three outstanding partners who have gone above and beyond in their dedication to the students of Robinson County. For those who may be unfamiliar, our Driven to Excel campaign is an annual campaign that rewards deserving seniors with a 3.2 GPA or higher who have no more than five unexcused absences during the school year. They get a chance at a drawing for scholarships or to win a brand new car. How exciting is that? Wouldn't that make you want to do better in school? It sure made me want to do better. So, please join me in recognizing first Lumberton Honda. Mr. Kent Locklear, please come up and receive your recognition. I'm gonna read this for you. Okay, Mr. Kent Locklear. Presented to Lumberton Honda by the Public Schools of Robinson County and deep appreciation for your unwavering support of our student success and academic achievement through your generous provision of vehicles as part of the Driven to Excel campaign. Your dedication, generosity and commitment to the students of Robinson County have made a lasting impact. Thank you so much. Do you want to say anything? I'm gonna let you say something now.
Hello to everybody, excited to be here, missed it the last couple of years, but we're excited to be able to give back to the community and try to brighten someone's day with a brand new car. It means a lot to me, especially in the county, in this county, that I love this county. I've been working here for about seventeen years and love the people here and I just would like for you to just remember us when you need your car serviced. If you don't buy it from me, I still can change your oil and rotate your tires. And I also gave an invitation for all the teachers that when they're out there working with the kids, I can come pick your car up while you're working with your kids, get it serviced and bring it right back to you. You don't even have to leave. So if you just, just do that for me to help me raise a little bit of money to pay back for getting, giving these cars away every year. But we really appreciate the board and for you letting us participate in this great program. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will have the pledge allegiance by the staff. Next, we will have the adoption of the agenda. A motion bidet by Mr. John Simmons, a second bidet by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of open session minutes. A motion is bidet by Ms. Melissa Ocean. We have a second, second bidet by Mr. Craig Lyer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? For information items, we got Driven to Excel recognition by Ms. Jessica Sealy. Yes.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and board members, please join me at the podium for a special presentation. So, good evening, good evening, everyone. It is truly a privilege to stand before you tonight on behalf of the Public Schools of Robinson County as we honor and celebrate the remarkable partnerships that have helped shape the success of our Driven to Excel campaign. At the heart of this initiative is a deep commitment to academic excellence, student achievement and meaningful community collaboration. And this evening, we are proud to recognize three outstanding partners who have gone above and beyond in their dedication to the students of Robinson County. For those who may be unfamiliar, our Driven to Excel campaign is an annual campaign that rewards deserving seniors with a 3.2 GPA or higher who have no more than five unexcused absences during the school year. They get a chance at a drawing for scholarships or to win a brand new car. How exciting is that? Wouldn't that make you want to do better in school? It sure made me want to do better. So, please join me in recognizing first Lumberton Honda. Mr. Kent Locklear, please come up and receive your recognition. I'm gonna read this for you. Okay, Mr. Kent Locklear. Presented to Lumberton Honda by the Public Schools of Robinson County and deep appreciation for your unwavering support of our student success and academic achievement through your generous provision of vehicles as part of the Driven to Excel campaign. Your dedication, generosity and commitment to the students of Robinson County have made a lasting impact. Thank you so much. Do you want to say anything? I'm gonna let you say something now.
Hello to everybody, excited to be here, missed it the last couple of years, but we're excited to be able to give back to the community and try to brighten someone's day with a brand new car. It means a lot to me, especially in the county, in this county, that I love this county. I've been working here for about seventeen years and love the people here and I just would like for you to just remember us when you need your car serviced. If you don't buy it from me, I still can change your oil and rotate your tires. And I also gave an invitation for all the teachers that when they're out there working with the kids, I can come pick your car up while you're working with your kids, get it serviced and bring it right back to you. You don't even have to leave. So if you just, just do that for me to help me raise a little bit of money to pay back for getting, giving these cars away every year. But we really appreciate the board and for you letting us participate in this great program. Thank you.
So, we also want to recognize Beasley Media Group, if you would come on up. Please join me in applauding them for their partnership. Presented to Beasley Media Group by the Public Schools of Robinson County with sincere appreciation for your steadfast partnership and invaluable contributions in promoting student success across Robinson County. Your unwavering support of the Driven to Excel campaign, including strong leadership in planning, organizing and promoting the event has helped amplify our message, celebrate academic achievement and inspire excellence within our schools. We gratefully recognize your continued collaboration and dedication across the following school years and this is in our sixth year. So again, please join me in applauding Beasley Media Group. Turn it over to you.
Just absolutely want to say thank you, obviously, to our board, the teachers, the administrators, everybody that's involved in making it possible, especially our partners Piedmont Natural Gas, Lumberton Honda. It's a community event. Radio is, the airwaves always belong to the community, so investing in our kids, the future and things like that is something we take a lot of pride in. We have an incredible team at Beasley that put in a lot of work to make sure that this is possible every year, but if there are no students that make that 3.5 and show up for school, which means it is you guys, the teachers and everybody and the parents that really make this possible. So we're just glad and proud and blessed to be a part of it. Thank you, guys.
And we also want to recognize Piedmont Natural Gas. Ms. Tammy Thurman, please come on up and be recognized. Let's applaud her. So we're presenting to Piedmont Natural Gas from the Public Schools of Robinson County with deep appreciation for your generous support of student success and academic achievement through your scholarship contributions as part of the Driven to Excel campaign. Your commitment to empowering students and investing in their futures has made a lasting impact across our schools and community. We are honored to recognize your continued partnership and generosity. Thank you again, Ms. Tammy, and I will let you say a few words if you'd like to.
So let me just begin by saying the honor is absolutely all mine. I bring you greetings from Piedmont Natural Gas, our nearly two thousand employees covering North Carolina, South Carolina as well as Tennessee. We actively seek out opportunities to give back to the community. And for those that don't know, I cover forty-seven counties and I live in Fayetteville. And when I heard about this amazing program, I immediately said, "Can Piedmont, Piedmont Natural Gas be a part of this? And can we take it to the next level?" And then to know that now, you know, if we give away a thousand dollar scholarship, there is some student that may go to Pembroke, that may go to Fayetteville State, therefore their first year is already paid for. And that is huge, huge, huge for our area. Those of you who don't know me, let me give you a very, very amazing fact about myself. Mr. Williamson was my high school principal. And he still looks the exact same way, I don't understand it. But yeah, he was my high school and I graduated high school in ninety-one, he is my high school principal. And so when he came up one day, I was like, "Mr. Williamson, Mr. Williamson, do you remember me?" And he was like, "Well, I know your face, but tell me what your name is." And so again, we are super honored just to partner with Robinson County Schools. Everyone is amazing and we look forward to doing it again and continuing on next year. Can't hint. Thank you.
And again, we just want to thank everybody. This is, again, this was year six and this allows our seniors to really be rewarded for coming to school and making good grades because again, a brand new car is a really exciting incentive to have. And again, scholarships as well for our students. Thank you again Piedmont Natural Gas for making those happen. And thank you again to Mr. Kent Locklear. You have also given our teachers some great incentives to show up and to do a great job as they come out to the event, giving them service vouchers and also putting them in a drawing as well. So thank you again for your partnership. Let's give them one more round of applause and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Leach. Thank you.
Well, now we want to recognition of UNC Southeastern and Outback. Well, this conversation started actually at the gym. I was at the gym actually in the locker room and a gentleman came to me and said, "Hey, we need to do something. We want to do something for the school system." And I said, "What can we do?" And then we put our heads together, he said, "What about sports physicals and stuff?" I said, "Yeah, that'd be real fun." So I said, "I can make it happen, we can do that," you know? And they provided over twelve hundred physicals, free physicals to our students, to our athletes at Outback State House, fed all the employees and stuff. There was about eighty-eight employees that helped with the event. It was a smooth event, it was our first time that we collaborated, we did it together and we wish we could have more collaboration, I hope it's not the last time. Hope we can make the event better next year with Southeastern come up and I don't think Outback should, would y'all come up, please? Yeah, if you gotta do it, it's sixty dollars, you have to do it at the Clinton or at Walmart. All right, and I'm gonna read this right here. It's presented to UNC Health Southeastern. The Public Schools of Robinson County proudly recognize UNC Health Southeastern for your unwavering partnership and continued support of the student health and well-being. Your commitment made the possible that the district's first ever Unified Sports Physical Day on May ninth, twenty twenty-five, which provided over twelve hundred student athletes, grade six through twelve, with access to comprehensive physical examinations. Through your collaboration, through your collaboration, leadership and dedication, our students will offer critical screenings and enhance opportunities to compete safely and confidently in their athletic programs. Your team efforts demonstrated true community spirit and professional excellence. Thank you for investing in the health of our youth for being a vital part of the mission to support the whole child. With appreciation to the Public Schools of Robinson County, June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Well, actually, this happened in the sauna, Vante. We were less stressed a little bit at the time, but this was truly a wonderful experience. I cannot thank the school system, the hospital and all of our employees and the physicians. We had probably over thirty physicians that came to help out and we had primary care set up, we had orthopedics set up and screening and it truly was a wonderful event and everybody came together. Outback came and fed all, almost ninety of us at lunch. We kind of worked through lunch and that was just a wonderful opening. I went by and thanked them afterwards, that was just such a gift. So thank you all and we look forward to doing it next year and making it a little bit better even. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. And like I said, Outback couldn't make it, but I will read a plaque out to Outback Lumberton. Thank you for your generous support and continued partnership, your commitment to our students, their educators, make a lasting impact for the Public Schools of Robinson County. So thank you. I'll take, I'll take it there when I leave. I'll take it there when I leave.
Okay. Forward line up.
Yes. If I can ask the board members and cabinet to stand up front to shake the hands of the athletes, if y'all don't mind. Cabinet, if you would join them.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, board members, cabinet. Once again, the Robinson County student athletes and coaches have represented the Public Schools of Robinson County in an outstanding fashion on the local, district, region, and state levels. So tonight, I have the distinct pleasure to recognize these individuals for their accomplishments throughout this school year. But before I recognize them, I would like to take time to briefly recognize the middle school champions and run-ups, as well as the players of the year. Because those individuals, and those individuals have already received their awards, but they are deserving to be recognized on this evening. First of all, with the fall sports, middle school volleyball champion was Southeastern Academy. The volleyball runner-up was Magnolia Middle. Football champion, St. Paul's Middle. Football runner-up was Lumberton Junior High. Girls' track was Pembroke Middle, was champions. Runner-up was Lumberton Junior High. The runner of the year was Arianna Alfred of Lumberton Junior High. Boys' basketball champion was Orem Middle School. Boys' basketball runner-up was Lumberton Junior High. Girls' basketball champion was Prospect Middle. Girls' runner-up is Pembroke Middle. The wrestling champion was Littlefield. Runner-up was Pembroke. The wrestler of the year was Aiden Luda from Littlefield Middle. The baseball champion was Littlefield Middle. Softball champion was Pembroke Middle. Softball runner-up was Prospect Middle. Boys' soccer champion was St. Paul's Middle. Boys' soccer runner-up was Magnolia Middle. Girls' soccer champion was Pembroke Middle. Girls' soccer runner-up was Littlefield Middle. Boys' track champion was Littlefield Middle. Boys' track runner-up was Pembroke Middle. And the boys' runner of the year was Eli Larry of Pembroke Middle. Let's give those middle schools a round of applause. And now we'll be recognizing those Robinson County champions on the high school level. The Robinson County, Robinson Cup Boys' Soccer Champion was Lumberton Senior High. The Robinson Cup Boys' Soccer Runner-Up was St. Paul's High School. Robinson County Shootout Boys' Champion was Lumberton Senior High School. Robinson County Shootout Boys' Runner-Up was Pinecrest High School. Robinson County Shootout Girls' Champion was Fairmont High School. Girls' runner-up was St. Paul's High School. Robinson County Slugfest Baseball Champion was East Columbus High School. Robinson County Slugfest Baseball Runner-Up was St. Paul's High. Robinson County Girls' Soccer Champion was Purnell Sweat High School. And Robinson County Girls' Soccer Runner-Up was Red Springs High School. Let's give those high schools a round of applause. And now we will begin our end-of-the-year sports for high school. And I will be recognizing schools in alphabetical order. So first, we have Fairmont High School. The SAC6 Conference Women Basketball Player of the Year was Tanaya Sims. The North Carolina High School Women Basketball East-West All-Star, Tanaya Sims. North Carolina, South Carolina Basketball All-Star was Tanaya Sims. The SAC6 Conference Women Basketball Coach of the Year was Marcus Thompson. SAC6 Conference Women Basketball Regular Season Champion was Fairmont High School's Girls' Basketball Team. SAC6 Women Tennis Doubles Tournament Champion, Jamie Kenada and Haley Dillinger. And I don't think Haley is here tonight. SAC6 Conference Women Tennis Singles Tournament Champion, Madeline Garwin. SAC6 Conference Women Tennis Player of the Year, Madeline Garwin. And North Carolina High School Two-Way Mid-East Region Mears 300-Meter Hurdle Champion was Malakai McKinnon. Let's give Fairmont athletes a round of applause. And now we will be recognizing Lumberton Senior High. The United Eight Conference Men Soccer Champion, Lumberton Senior High. United Eight Conference Men Soccer Player of the Year, Kobe Walton. The NCSCA All-Region Soccer, Kobe Walton. United Eight Conference Men Soccer Defensive Player of the Year, Dakota Hunt. The NCSCA All-Region Soccer, Dakota Hunt. The NCSCA All-Region Soccer, Emilio Carrero. United Eight Conference Men Soccer Coach of the Year, Kenny Simmons. The NCCCA All-Region, Maddie Hammons. NCCCA All-State, Maddie Hammond. United Eight Conference Cheer Coach of the Year, Jamie Britt. United Eight Conference Men Bowling Champion, Lumberton Senior High School. North Carolina High School Athletic Association Men Bowling State Champion, Hunter Newberry. United Eight Conference Men Basketball Player of the Year, Jaden Shepherd. North Carolina High School Athletic Association East-West All-Star, Jaden Shepherd. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Men's Mid-East Region Wrestling 106-Pound Champion, Travellius Hall, Travellion Hall. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Men Wrestling 106 State Champion, Travellion Hall. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Mid-East Regional Wrestling 132-Pound Champion, Dominique Quinn Powell. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Mid-East Wrestling Champion, 144-Pound, Aaron Ellis. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Men Mid-East Region Wrestling 190-Pound Champion, James Ellis. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Men's Wrestling 190-Pound State Runner-Up was also James Ellis. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Mid-East Region 285-Pound Wrestling Champion was Jalen Terry Winston. United Eight Conference Men Wrestling Regular Season Champion is Lumberton High. The North Carolina High School Athletic Four-Way Mid-East Men Wrestling Region Champion, Lumberton High. United Eight Conference Men Wrestling Coach of the Year, Jamie Bell. United Eight Conference Women Shot Put Champion was Andrea Brown. United Eight Conference Women Field Athlete Player of the Year, Andrea Brown. United Eight Conference Baseball Player of the Year, Brody Stewart. United Eight Conference Baseball Regular Season Champion, Lumberton Senior High. United Eight Conference Baseball Coach of the Year, Jeff McLamb. And United Eight Conference Swim Coach of the Year, Will Britt. Let's give Lumberton Senior High a round of applause. Next, we have Purnell Sweat High School. United Eight Conference Women Golf Champion, Purnell Sweat High School. United Eight Conference Women Golf Coach of the Year, Kelsey Hunt. United Eight Conference Men Tennis Coach of the Year, Jeremy Simpson. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Four-Way Women's Wrestling 132-Pound State Champion, Ayana Crawford. The United Eight Conference Women Soccer Player of the Year, Josie McLean. And the North Carolina High School Athletic All-State Women's Soccer, Josie McLean. Let's give Purnell Sweat a round of applause. Next, we have Red Springs High School. Southeast, I mean, the SAC6 Conference Men 4x4-Meter Relay Champions is Red Springs High, coached by Marshall McCray. The SAC6 Conference Men 4x4-Meter Relay Champion consists of Riley Graham, Jacason Mack, Jacelsin Mack, and Timothy Putt. SAC6 Conference Men Shot Put Champion, Kamariyan McBride. SAC6 Conference Men Disks Champion, Kamariyan McBride. SAC6 Men Field Event Male Athlete of the Year, Kamariyan McBride. SAC6 Conference Women Shot Put Champion, Monica Washington. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Two-Way Mid-East Region Women Shot Put Champion, Monica Washington. And North Carolina High School Athletic Association Two-Way Mid-East Regional Men Disks Runner-Up, Tamaris Brown. Let's get Red Springs High a round of applause. And last, but certainly not least, St. Paul's High School. SAC6 Conference Football Defensive Player of the Year, Desiree Roberts. SAC6 Conference Football Offensive Player of the Year, Theophilus Seltzer. North Carolina High School East-West All-Star Football, Theophilus Seltzer. SAC6 Conference Football Champion, St. Paul's High School. SAC6 Football Coach of the Year, Coach Mike Seltzer. SAC6 Conference Men Bowling Regular Season Champion, St. Paul's High School. SAC6 Conference Men Bowling Tournament Champion, St. Paul's High School. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association 24-25 Game Day Varsity Coed Non-Tumble Division II Cheerleading State Champions, St. Paul's High School. North Carolina Cheerleading Coaches Association 2024-2025 Game Day Varsity Coed Non-Tumble Cheerleading State Champions, St. Paul's High School. SAC6 Conference Cheer Coach of the Year, Tashira Patterson. SAC6 Conference Men Outdoor Track and Field Champion, St. Paul's High School. SAC6 Conference Outdoor Track and Field Men Coach of the Year, Charles Johnson. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Two-Way Mid-East Regional 4x1-Meter Relay Champions, St. Paul's High, coached by Coach Charles Johnson. And those guys consist of Malakai Locklear, Joshua McBride, Quintel McNeil, and Takim Oxendine. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association Two-Way Mid-East Region 4x4-Meter Relay Runner-Up was St. Paul's High School. And those guys consist of Quintel McNeil, Takim Oxendine, Theophilus Seltzer, and Donnell Thomas. Let's give all these athletes a round of applause. Thank you.
Yes, that was real good. Always good to see you. Next, we will have Child Nutrition Health Inspection Recognitions by Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, board members. So tonight, we would like to recognize our men and women in our cafeteria who received a perfect score on their last health inspection. Again, this is an extreme honor for these individuals in the cafeteria to receive a perfect score. It shows their hard work and dedication to ensure that every time a student steps in that they are receiving a healthy meal. The schools that received a perfect score are as followed. Deep Branch Elementary, East Robinson Primary, Fairmount High School, Fair Grove Elementary, Carroll Middle, Littlefield Middle, Long Branch Elementary, Lumberton Junior, Magnolia Elementary, Peterson Elementary, Pine Grove Elementary, Rex Renard Elementary, St. Paul's High, Tanglewood, and Union Chapel. Again, would you please help me in congratulating these folks?
Next, we will have Infinit- I'm sorry. Dr. May, I'm sorry.
In relation to our school food service. I had a conversation with a lady today that her children are not enrolled in the public schools, but they live in Robinson County. And she said that she filled an application out to get the food service for the summer. And she was saying how nice that the public schools were. Ms. Charlene told her they called her back. They boxed up her food, and she's going to pick it up for a week. That is wonderful. She was talking about how nice they were to her. So will you compliment Ms. Charlene and her team that how they're boxing that food up? I didn't know they were doing that by the week. Bobby, will you? I know that it's along this line. Can you just make one comment or two about that program?
Yeah. So last school year, Ms. Charlene, and Ms. Charlene is wonderful. Her and her staff are finding opportunities to ensure our children in the county receive the meals once, even when school's out. So one of the programs that she's, we started last school year was a box of meals for a week. So we bring in staff. They box up breakfast and lunch. Some of it does need to be heated up. We have several sites this year, and we can include that information in our next packet that will do just box feedings. The first part of the summer will include our regular summer feeding programs. But along with that, there are several sites throughout the county that offer just the box meals that will last students a week.
Thank you. I think that's a wonderful program.
Next, we will have Infinite Campus Training Plan by Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good evening again. So we included in your packet our draft professional development plan as we transition into Infinite Campus at the beginning of the 25-26 school year. So we just wanted to share this information with you tonight as information as we prepare our transition and how much training is going to take place prior to our students' return in August. So we have laid out the days and times that our folks will be required to receive training based upon their specific role within the district. Prior to that, if you notice, the blue links that are in our training plan, those are videos that our staff will need to watch prior to attending the training. We do have a live individual who will come in, so this is not going to be totally virtual training. So we do have an individual who is dedicated to us for an entire week to provide training across all representatives within the district. So just wanted to share that information with you tonight.
Bobby, if you would, share a little more information. This is an upgrade of a public school student information system as required by the state. So share a little more, please. as required by the state. So share a little more, please.
So as we've shared with you a few times prior, throughout the course of this school year, the state has transitioned to Infinite Campus from Power School. The state went through Phase One about half the districts last year. So we are currently in Phase Two. So all of, next school year, will be a learning curve for everyone across the district in terms of managing our student information. Our data managers, along with Ms. Angela and her team, are doing a wonderful job to ensure that transition is as smooth as possible. They have been working all year to ensure that the data is correct and accurate as they can ensure at this point to create that smooth transition at the end of this month. And Infinite Campus will become live the first week in July.
And Bobby, also, we do need to recognize Ms. Angela and the data managers got a compliment from the state. Part of the process is to clean up our current data. And they said that they did a better job, or the best job of cleanup that they've seen this year.
And that is correct. Our data managers, under the guidance of Ms. Angela, have worked tirelessly over the course of this school year to get into Power School and ensure that data is ready to be moved over to Infinite Campus. I do know for a fact they've worked the last two Saturdays with the intentions of working again this Saturday to ensure that we're ready whenever they turn our data live in Infinite Campus. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Summer School Accounts by Dr. Deborah Dallas.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. We just wanted to give you a brief update on all of our summer camps. We have several staff members and departments who are busy gearing up for all of our camps. We do have our Read to Achieve Camp. We invite you to come out to any of our sites during the summer. That will start on Monday. It runs two weeks, and that is for second through third grade. Our Indian Education Camp, we have two sites. That is for third through eighth grade and high school vision students. Our Career and Technical Education Camp, which is for our rising ninth graders, that will be held at the Career Center. That is also starting on Monday. Our Migrant Education is for pre-K through twelve students. That's also starting on Monday. That has one site. Our Multi-Lingual Language Learners, we have three sites. That serves our K through twelve students. Credit Recovery will be held at all high schools, and that is facilitated by the principals. And we have our Extended School Year Camp. And that's the only camp that will start in July twenty-eighth. All of our other camps will be starting this coming Monday. That camp does start in July. So once again, we invite you to come out. We're appreciative of all the opportunities that we're able to extend our students over the summer. So please come out and check them out. Any questions? Thank you.
Hold up, hold up, now that we have public comments.
Oh.
We do, we do have a public comment. Ms. Tori Purcell.
Tori Purcell. Yes, T-O-R-Y-P-U-R-C-E.
Good evening Chairman Leach.
Hello, hello, Ms. Purcell. You're going to have, state your name. You're going to have three minutes to speak and voice your concerns.
All right, thank you. Good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. My name is Tori Purcell, and I have the privilege of serving as the Clinical Manager for Code Pediatric Therapy, and I'm also a proud graduate of PSRC. For the past four years, our team has had the honor of providing speech therapy services to your district, continuing a nearly twenty-year legacy of support that began with Coastal Therapy Partners and was carried out throughout our acquisition. This partnership has meant a great deal to us. Over the years, we've grown alongside your students, adapting to the increasing needs and demands, collaborating closely with your staff, and remaining deeply committed to each campus we serve. Our team of six speech-language pathologists and assistants aren't just contractors. They are trusted, familiar faces that provide a steady presence for students navigating challenges in one of the most underserved regions in the state. Recently, we learned that our contract would not be renewed for the upcoming year. While this was unexpected, I am not here tonight to question that decision. I am here to honor the partnership we've shared over the past two decades and to express our continued commitment to your district and your students. We haven't taken this partnership for granted, not for a single day. We've always tried to be flexible, responsive, and deeply invested in your mission. We recognize that districts must face difficult decisions based on many factors. We have great respect for the complexities you all face as a board, budget constraints, shifting needs, and strategic priorities. But we also hope you consider the importance of continuity, connection, and the staff and students that will be greatly impacted by this change. With that, I would like to ask you all to consider room for dialogue to create a path forward that allows us the opportunity to continue to support your students in any way that aligns with your vision. At COLD, our vision is to bring hope and change lives here and around the world. It's a vision we live out through every interaction, every therapy session, and every relationship we build in the communities we serve. This district, these campuses are no exception. It has been a meaningful chapter in our story, and we would love for that chapter to continue. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and most of all, for the work you do on behalf of students and families every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-two, five action items, twenty-two, five, twenty-two, six, PSRC Scheduled Board Meetings.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members. Etrocyte are the dates for our regular board meeting for twenty-five, twenty-six. If you would take a look at that. November the eleventh is the holiday, so we need to reschedule that. Replace etrocite calendar so that we can probably schedule that tonight. April the fourteenth is after the Easter break, which is the week of the sixth through the tenth. So before we ask for approval, can we take a look at the calendar and see when you want to move the November eleventh board meeting?
One more. You don't want to do it that week, so the eighteenth the next week? Is that right? Dr. May?
Why could we not just delay each one one week? Do I mean what?
Will we have to delay each one or just that one one week, to the eighteen?
Well, I was thinking of November eleventh and April the fourteenth. Just could we not just delay each of those one week?
That's, that's what I was saying. Is there a problem with the four? I thought the problem with the fourteen, Easter's sixth through the tenth. So we'll be still here on Easter, right? That's the week after Easter's up. So we could do, Mrs. Trey, yeah, I thought I missed it. I thought you said there was no problem with eleven.
I'd like to make a recommendation. November the eighteenth, that is the Tuesday after November the eleventh, and April the twenty-first, if that's not late in, too late in the month, Dr. Williamson?
No.
That would be my two recommendations that I would say for November and April.
All right. So most, yeah, so motion was on the table. Bobby, it's the same suggestion by Dr. May. You want to second Mr. Britt? All right, we're all in favor, say aye. All opposed? So the board member, I mean, the board meetings now will be April the twenty-first and November the eighteenth. I'm sorry, Dr. May, I misunderstood.
So with that, Mr. Chair, let me ask for approval of these dates so we can get them on our calendar with the recommended changes, please.
A motion being made by Mr. Trey Britt to approve the changes to the board meeting calendars. Do we have a second? A second bid by Mr. Craig Lowry, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, now we need to vote on the board.
Mr. Chair, if I may, for the next item, EC Contract that services, I may ask that we not take action on that now. That once we come out of closed session, then I would ask the board to take action on that item, please.
Dr. May? Hold up, Ms. Dr. May, go ahead. I'm sorry, you might want to, on my phone.
I'm sorry. What you just said, we're going to discuss these in closed session?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, because I have questions about three of them. Okay, thank you.
Great.
We're going to discuss that under, under legal. We're going to discuss that under legal. So do we have to? So we don't have to make a vote on that? Okay. All right, next, we will have Old Maine Contract, Pre-K on Meals by Mr. Bobby Locklear.
So, good evening again Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. So our child nutrition program is currently providing breakfast and lunch for Old, Old Mainstream Academy. They're requesting now. They are now requesting that to expand that contract to include thirty-five to forty students that are proposed to be enrolled in their pre-K program. That would be breakfast and lunch daily. The meal price that we would be reimbursed for them for each meal will be two dollars for breakfast and four dollars for lunch. And we would, with, continue with our current delivery program from Purnell Sweat to Old Maine. So we are asking for approval.
Mr. Terry?
So are we just modifying the current contract that we have?
No, this is an, this is an additional contract to include those new students.
But we don't have a copy of it. Should we vote on a contract that we don't have a copy of?
We just, is there a, do we have the contract, Ken?
There is just an agreement that we, that agreement between us and them. There is not a particular contract. It is just an agreement.
Their agenda says Old Maine Contract.
Okay, well, I apologize for it not being included. But what was shared with me is an agreement that we make with them, the same thing we've done with their lunch program.
Okay, so it's not a contract. Okay.
It's this agreement for meals, correct?
Agreement to add pre-K.
Yeah, add pre-K.
Pre-K. We're already in agreement with them to provide lunch for the kindergarten through eighth grade or as those grades continue. This is just to add pre-K to that, to that.
Mr. Chair, is this for next year?
Yes, sir.
Can we pull this and defer it to the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Would you fair the Old Maine contracts to the next board meeting? Budget Amendments, twenty-four, twenty-five, with Ms. Erica Setser?
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. Included in your packet, you will find budget amendments for the current fiscal year for state funds and the Shining Stars Program. And I can answer any questions anyone has about those at this time.
Mr. John, Ms. Kristy Fields, then, Ms. John.
So for, for the public that's listening, listening to the meeting tonight, can you explain to them why we need to do these budget amendments?
So a couple of reasons we needed to budget amendments is we get new funding in from the state. We get a system revision. Sometimes it's once every two weeks, sometimes it's every week, sometimes it's once a month. So the state continues throughout the year to give us additional state funds or make changes to the existing funds that we have. We also have a process called ABC Transfer where certain PRCs that we have, we're able to transfer between state funds if we see we don't need it in a certain area and we do need it in another area. And that's what a lot of them are tonight. But mostly, it's getting additional funds, transferring between the PRCs within the state funds or making the adjustments the state has sent to us.
And PRC stands for?
I'm sorry, Program Report Code. So the State of North Carolina and Department of Public Instruction has an extensive chart of accounts out on their website. And everything that we talk about gets translated into a budget code with the PRC being the content of that, like OO1 is classroom teachers, O24 is DSSF. There's a long list and a thousand-plus-page document out there that lists all these programs.
Mr. John, Ms. Simmons?
Ms. Erica, the amendments you made, that's the only changes?
Yes, sir.
Make emotional approve.
A motion being made by Mr. John Simmons to approve the budget amendments. A second bid made by Mr. Melissa Ocean, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Continuing Resolution, twenty-five, twenty-six, Ms. Erica Setser?
Thank you. Continuing Resolution is just a document that says in the event that we don't have a state-adopted budget by July the first, we can continue operating based on the current school year twenty-four, twenty-five numbers until such document is presented by the state and PSRC updates our operating budget.
Ms. Melissa Ocean?
Motion to approve the continuing resolution for twenty-five, twenty-six.
A motion being made by Ms. Melissa Ocean to, for continuing resolutions, twenty-five, twenty-six. Do we got a second? A second being made by Dr. Linda May, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Hey, Mr. Henry, how you vote?
Forward.
Kristen Monroe, how you vote?
Forward.
All right, thank you. Also, we need to, for the budget amendments, we need to know how you, how you voted also for the budget amendments. Mr. Henry?
I'm forward.
All right, Ms. Kristy Monroe? Ms. Monroe, for the budget amendment?
Sorry, sorry, yes.
All right, so we got all yes. Thank you. Mr. Terry, Dr. Terry Locklear got a question?
About micro threshold.
Discuss, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Terry, go ahead.
About the threshold.
All right, by the threshold, oh, okay, all right, when we get to, okay, my fault. Erica, micro purchase threshold increase of twenty-five, twenty-six by Ms. Erica Setser?
So part of the infusion of the COVID funds brought new procurement rules from the federal government. So this was about five years ago. I think this is about the fourth year we presented the micro purchase threshold. So when those funds came about, at first, it was twenty-five hundred dollars. Any federal expense over twenty-five hundred dollars required a different procurement process. The federal government, before they released it to us, changed that to ten. And what that process meant, any federal expense over ten thousand dollars required three informal quotes or for it to be evaluated to be a sole source. And then there had to be an internal process by the district to approve sole source, any purchase over ten thousand. This particular document increases that dollar threshold from ten thousand to thirty thousand. So anything over thirty thousand requires us to follow that procurement process.
All right, Mr. Terry?
Mr. Schwartz, so the first line says, whereas from time to time in the public schools of Robertson County, and it says the unit. But at the footnote says the term unit should be replaced with the proper public entity name.
This did not have legal review week. This is a, this form should be amended to, before this is signed, the resolution should be changed to incorporate the appropriate names throughout.
So should it say Board of Education? I just put Public Schools of Robertson County because we monitor the daily procurement processes.
Give me one second if you would.
Okay.
Okay, it's got the mini Brooks in there. This is fine, it's fine the way it is.
Okay, but, okay, on the second page where it says now therefore be it resolved, there's option one, option two, and option three. So which one are we voting on?
Those are internal options that give us the ability to present this to the board. Those are internal options that give us the ability to present this to the board, not the options of the board deciding which one to choose. Those are options that allow us to be able to submit this document. And we need it by all the provisions there. But it's not an option, did you pick one of those options that we're voting on? Those are the three options that allow us to submit this document before you for approval.
All right, Mrs. Terry?
Ms. Erica, who is wanting this increase? Is it House Superintendent, who, who is wanting this increase?
They procure, well, the finance department.
You're wanting this increase?
Yes.
Okay, and you said it was what previously, dollar amount?
Ten thousand.
And now you want to make it to thirty thousand or fifty thousand?
Thirty thousand. The fifty thousand is related to contracts, um, which we don't enter into with federal funds. We do that with capital outlay. And this will be the, the, this will be the fifth year I presented this for approval.
Right, but there's an increase this year.
It, it's, I present the increase, you have to do it annually. So in, in the previous four years, I've asked for an increase from ten thousand to thirty thousand.
And we've approved it.
And you have approved it previously. You just have to present it every year, you can't do it one time and then it's good until you present it again. You have to repeat it annually.
Now I'm clear, thank you.
Dr. May?
Assistant tonight, are we ready to vote?
Somebody, somebody got to make a motion and we can vote.
I make a motion that we adopt this threshold to thirty thousand from ten thousand to thirty thousand as we have done the last couple of years to my memory.
A, a motion, a motion being made to increase the, the threshold to thirty thousand, and there's been the second by Ms. Melissa Ocean, all in favor, say aye? That motion should be to approve the resolution.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the resolution to move the threshold from ten thousand to thirty thousand as we have done in the last couple of years.
A motion's been made to, to, to approve the resolution of the thirty thousand dollar threshold, and the second's been made by Ms. Melissa Ocean, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I did also want to add that this mirrors the state requirement. The state threshold is thirty thousand. And so the federal government wanted to give the states options to make the procurement process cuz it's already so complicated to make it more streamlined. So your state and federal procurement rules would mirror themselves.
Uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Henry, how you voted?
Forward.
All right, Ms. Kristen Monroe, how you vote?
I'm for it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one more, the monthly financial, it's on the second page.
Okay, now the monthly financial report by Miss Erica Sessom.
And I presented the monthly financial report, um, in your packet, and I can answer any questions anybody has at this time.
Mr. John Simmons?
Sir, has anything changed?
No, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
There's been a motion by Mr. John Simmons to approve the monthly financial report. And there's been this second by Mr. Bradley Phillips, all in favor, say aye? All opposed? Uh, Mr. Henry, how you vote?
Forward.
All right, did everybody vote?
Yep.
All right, let's have it.
Thank you.
Great. Erica, before you take your seat please, couple of years, maybe been three years back, uh, we looked at EC, uh, transportation costs that helped us make the decision to move those programs to their home to base school. Can you give us an update on the amount of savings at this point?
Yes, sir, so in comparing the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to the current school year we're in, we're very close, we're at like two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So we're very close to three hundred thousand dollars in savings and looking at those EC contracted transportation costs, um, from one year to the next. And we will certainly need that in transportation cuz as I've repeatedly said, transportation is over every year. Um, so the last two months, we have experienced that over just there. So that, that will be a savings that will help us as we close out the year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Melissa Ocean?
I moved at the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, going to closed session for the purposes of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three through three eighteen, point eleven, A-one and six, and to consult with attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three through three eighteen, point eleven, A-one, three.
Motion's been made by Ms. Melissa Ocean to go into closed session. A second being made by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, closed session. Get listen, Monroe.
...by Miss Melissa Ocean and a second being made by Mr. Herron Brewer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to approve close session minutes. A motion being made by Mr. John Simmons. Second being made by Mr. Trey Britt. All in favor say aye. Motion to approve personnel last presented. I'm sorry. Mr. Melissa, Mr. Herron, how do you vote to approve the close session minutes?
I'm for it.
Aye.
What about the motion to approve personnel last presented?
I thought we were gonna make some modifications. Or are we gonna vote separately on those concerns?
On personnel?
Yes.
I know, I don't think we had no changes in personnel.
We had discussion about part-time.
Yeah, that was at a later, that was at a later date. That was at a later date. We didn't, we didn't make no decision just we're gonna look at hiring somebody at a later date in the near future. That's the only thing we made a decision on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Alright, so a motion to approve personnel last presented.
Aye.
Aye.
I made a motion, do we got a motion in a second before we vote on it?
I make a motion to approve personnel as presented.
A motion being made by Miss Melissa Ocean, a second being made by Mr. Craig Lyer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, need to announce that Mr. Leach and Ms. Fields are recused for voting on this.
Yes, oh thank you. Thank you. Alright, a motion to, a motion to amend trans, a motion to approve. Alright, can we get a vote for a motion to approve personnel last presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That'll be recorded as an eight zero vote with Ms. Monroe absent and Mr. Leach. That'll be recorded as an eight-zero vote with Ms. Monroe absent and Mr. Leach and Ms. Fields recused.
Correct. A motion to amend transfers, a motion to approve transfers as amended. A motion being made by Dr. Lindon Manuel, a second being made by Ms. Christie Fields. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ms. Ocean.
Ms. Ocean, how you vote? I got it on here, Ms. Ocean. Alright, now, we have to go back and vote on the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six contracted services. Do we, do we have a motion? Dr. Emmanuel. Yes, she, she.
Ms. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the contracts as presented for the twenty-twenty-five, um, school year.
Alright, a motion being made by Dr. Lindon Manuel, do I got a second? Second being made by Mr. Craig Lyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Motion fails, motion fails, five-five.
Alright, Mr. Trey Britt, or Mr. Trey?
I'd like to make a substitute motion off this contract for PSRC EC contracts twenty-five, twenty-six. I'd like to take off PTS services as the provider and add Cole Pediatrics and Overflow Enterprises back in their original positions of schools that they had this previous school year.
A motion being made by Mr. Trey Britt to take PTS services off the contract and put Cole Services and Overflow back into the contracted services that had. And a second will be made by Mr. Bradley Phillips. All in favor say aye.
You didn't do discussion?
A discussion. Dr. Manuel.
Okay, so my understanding in your motion, Mr. Trey, is you want to take PTS off and add these two overflow and the other one back on. Is that what you're saying?
Being PTS is a new company, yes, I know we do use them for Kelly Services for substitutes, but I'm not willing to, as a speech company, and add overflow. And they will have the same capacity schools, however you want to call it, that they have before, along with Cole Pediatrics, just like it was this past year. Do you understand what I'm saying, Dr. Manuel?
I, I get what you're saying. Now, tell me, tell me, can you give me some logic, say it again, your logic for taking the Kelly off? Tell me one more time your logic.
PTS is a new company, never used before.
Okay, alright, but the others, so.
The others we have used, we had the discussion about that you're not aware of, and I want to keep them at the same capacity as for the last contract.
Reasoning that's given to you by the, given to us by the lawyer, that didn't, that doesn't make any sway with you at all?
No ma'am, because there's, I'm more than one in this situation, I'm only one though, and I had others to vote with me.
I was talking about you, not the others. Okay, thank you.
Craig?
How about Chris?
Mr. Craig?
I'll be honest with you, I'm conflicted in this whole situation tonight. I can see some logic in taking PTS off because it is a new company and kind of wondering how did this whole process happen? I do have a concern bringing on two companies back on that they cost us money and the EC department this year, but we're gonna add them back on. I'd love to know how much, and I know we wouldn't get that answer tonight. That's just me voicing my concerns. You know, PTS, if that could be, since they are involved, my understanding now with Kelly Education, and I didn't know that till I was sitting here tonight. If I could get more information on that before I would vote to say yes to them. But I do have a real concern bringing companies back on, and they did cost us money last year. Now, understanding too, they've been with us many years, and, and I mean, that's a plus and, you know, it's hard to walk, tell somebody you're walking away after twenty years. So like I said, there's a lot of conflicts that I have in this whole situation tonight, that's it.
So, Ms. Chair, if that is the pleasure of the board to pull PTS, then I would ask our attorney for those two companies that rewrite a contract that spell out concerns, I think that ought to be a requirement.
I can agree, Mr. Terry, you got, um, Mr. Terry, Mr. Bradley, and then Mr. Henry. And then we're gonna move on.
I, I'm not comfortable coming here and just sort of breaking relationships that's been established for twenty-something years without any, without any forewarning. There, there should have been some, there should have been opportunities created for this board to receive some kind of update if there were issues in place. I'm not comfortable coming here and just cut these ties at the last minute in hearing all these things. And picking up a new co, a brand, and creating a brand-new relationship and sending money out of state. I just feel like we need to work with, this is an LEA, this is a local education agency. We need to build relationships in this community. We need to have ongoing discussions about progress and how these, and how these relationships are working out. And if they're not working out, there needs to be ample documentation and ample warning to this board on how to proceed before we get here and are only presented with one option.
Mr. Bradley, then Mr. Henry, you'll, you'll be next, and then that's, that's it. You covered, alright, Mr. Henry?
My, my concern is, um, our EC department is seems to be our most vulnerable department right now. And being held liable legally. If we have contractors, that it shows out in the contract that they don't meet deadlines, I have a concern with that because it's costing us in several ways. That's, that's the issue I have. The PTS being a new company, I don't have an issue with that. I just see, when I look at the contracts, I see, um, they taking the bulk of the work. And some of these other companies are not even close, and it just makes me, it raises a red flag for me to say, you know, what's going on here? But, um, it's, it's gonna be tough to decide on this issue.
Yeah, alright.
Yes, Mr. Henry, those are different services for the small dollar amounts, that's why that it says. But I want to make recommendations, so we pull PTS from tonight, but approve the other companies because as Dr. Emmanuel stated, EC services, we've got to move on. And we'll do some additional research, come back next month, and present different information for those companies.
And, and what I said, I want to make sure we holding all contractors up under the same microscope and up under the same, up under the same microscope, but up under the same, we expect the same from all of them. Documentations, you coming up, you mess with people livelihoods, all kind of stuff with our kids livelihoods, I make sure we have proper documentation and everything, we want to counsel a contract. I said, Mr., Mr. Trey?
I'm not willing to come back next month and discuss it, this board voted, we voted the way we voted, that's the way it needs to be.
Alright.
Did we take a vote?
Yeah. No, you need to take a vote.
I thought we took a vote, okay.
Alright. You didn't allow for discussion first.
No, I thought we took a vote, then we discussed it, alright, we took a vote, then we discussed it. Alright, well, I'll, 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 okay, all, all in favor, okay, a motion be, he did, he did, he made a substitute motion. We did, we voted twice already. We voted twice already, it passed. Alright, a motion's on the table, a motion was on the table by Mr. Trey Britt, a second will be made by Mr. Bradley Phillips to, to accept this, accept the con, accept the contracts, accept PTS, but add Cole and Overflow back on. And all in favor? That was after the vote was taken. We can vote again, but that was after the vote.
What was the vote?
It, it, it passed, what Trey said, it was after, we can vote again, but that was after the vote. Go ahead, Mr., let's take a vote again, Mr. Craig?
My question here, it, there was a vote taken, it was five to five, and then the comment was made, I thought, and tell me if I'm wrong, by Dr. Williamson, that we'd take off this PTS and we would vote on what's here. And they would bring information about those other two companies with some contracts through the lawyer.
Alright.
That would hold them a little accountable to stuff that made a mistake this past year. Now, that state, that was stated whether we voted on it or not.
Let's, let's do, let's do the, let's do the vote again, because the vote was, we made two votes, we made two votes. Dr. Man, Dr. Manuel's vote was, it got shut down, and Mr. Trey made a motion, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm clarifying my motion, that take PTS off the EC contractors for this upcoming school year. ET, PTS, that's along with Kelly Services, keep Kelly Services as the substitutes, but take them off the EC contracts. And add back on their overflow and Cole Pediatrics at the same capacity that they were for the previous school year. That was, that's the motion, that's has been made.
Alright, do we have a second?
That was the motion that you made before, and you have a second by Mr. Phillips.
But his motion was a substitute motion.
Yeah, yeah, but we voted on the substitute motion too. That's.
Excuse me, excuse me, what? The original motion by Dr. Emmanuel, seconded by Mr. Larry, was to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six EC contract services as presented. That failed on a five-to-five vote. Then Mr. Britt, seconded by Mr. Phillips, made a motion to remove PTS services from the list and add Cole Pediat, Cole Pediatrics and Overflow in their place at the same capacity as before.
Yes, and now, let's, let's have a vote, let's show, show, show by the raised hands.
You started to vote, and Dr. Manuel started to ask a question, and that's when I, I said you need to allow for discussion.
I think it was after, well, let's, show by, show by the raised hands, all in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye, by the show of hands, by the mo, by the motion. Alright, Ms. Melissa, how do you vote? Mr. Henry, how do you vote? Mr. Henry, how do you vote?
I'm gonna vote against it.
Alright, that's three, and that's one, two, three, four, five, and it's three, and I'm gonna have to go with.
You're gonna, and your vote is one, I'm sorry, you didn't call for the nays. Did you vote aye?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the nay, the nays were Mr., Mr. Larry, Dr. Manuel, and Mr. Henry.
Okay, got it. So that passed seven to three.
And, and, Dr. Wilson?
Chair members, you did approve new APs tonight, and we want to present them to you so you can put a name and a face together. Tomorrow, can you go?
Good evening, Chairman Leach and school board members, once again, tonight we want to recognize our new assistant principals and welcome them to their new positions within PSRC. So when I call your name, please step forward. Mr. Billy Hagens, he'll be the new assistant principal at Purnell Swett High School. Mr. Terrence Curry, the new assistant principal at Roland Norman Elementary. Ms. Sherry Hayes, the new assistant principal at WH Knuckles Elementary School. Nicolette Hunt, the new assistant principal at Fairmont High School. Mr. Charles Johnson, the new assistant principal at St. Paul's Middle School. Mr. Tia Kelly, the new assistant principal at Peterson Elementary. Ms. Tara Lewis, the new assistant principal at Lomington High School. Mr. Stephen Strickland, the new assistant principal at Peters, at Pembroke Middle School. Also tonight, you approved some reassignments of assistant principals. So Ms. Tasha Walker, Walker, who was assistant principal at St. Paul's Elementary, will be placed at Littlefield Middle. Mr. Keisha Rebels, who's currently the AP at WH Knuckles, will be placed at Pembroke Middle. Ms. Gwendolyn Rogers, who's the current AP at Roland Norman, will be at Carroll Middle. Ms. Carolina Platt Smith, who's the current AP at Littlefield Middle, will be the new AP at St. Paul's Elementary. And Mr. Jordan Strickland, who is the current AP at St. Paul's Middle, will be the new AP at St. Paul's High. So we can please get our new APs around the halls and welcome them in their new positions.
I've got to say this to our APs, as of right now, you are not becoming an AP, you are. You are, congratulations.
Dr. Williamson, tell them it's not this bad as it is tonight, sitting and waiting. This would be the worst you have to go through tonight, just sit and wait.
It was good debate, that's how we should operate.
Yeah.
And board room, move on.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations. A motion being made to adjourn by Mr. Trey Britt, do we got a second? Second by, by Ms. Christie, all in favor, say, Ms. Christie Fields, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?